So I'm going to open the city council regular meeting. This is at 6:00 PM, Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. We're at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas. So I'm going to now call the city council meeting in Granbury, Texas to order. And note that if you'd like to watch this live later, or if you watch it on video later, but live right now, it is at www.granbury.org/live. So we're now called to order. If Pastor Mary Carter could come up and bring the invocation, I'd appreciate it. Stand.
Thank you for having me here. Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude tonight to be able to pray over this city council meeting. Lord, we thank you for being a God of love and mercy and grace. Thank you for the calling that you have placed on the lives of your servants, our mayor, our city manager, city staff, city council members, and all involved. Lord, we give thanks for their willingness and sacrifice to lead our city. We give thanks for their responsibility and dedication in the way of service that they have chosen to take up on behalf of the citizens. Lord, bless them, aid them, and give them favor and unity in all decisions for this city. Holy Spirit, come lead this meeting tonight so that our heavenly Father may be glorified through the decisions made this evening. Lord, we pray that your kingdom would come in Granbury, Texas, as it is in heaven through your power working in each of these servants. May your truth be revealed and your light shine brighter in this city. We thank you, Father, again, for this council and our mayor, city staff, the first responders, hospitals, schools, businesses, and citizens, all who work to make this place so many call home such a wonderful city. We ask this all in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, whose blood covers all our sins and whose perfect love sets us free from our fears. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
And I misspoke, and I want to... Such beautiful words. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Pastor Meg Carter from Temple Hall, yes, and soon to be Temple Hall Fellowship.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state of God, one indivisible.
Thank you. And before we get started, we have one absence, one excused absence tonight. Dr. Woodley is... He's not going to be here. So he will be absent tonight. We'll be operating with five on the council. So now we have proclamations and presentation. Where the city council, city manager can issue encouraging statements to recognize city staff. Mr. Cogman?
At this time, I'd like for Pat and Michael to meet me up front. And if we could, play that video while we're up here.
Our most improved airport of the year has been called the friendliest little airport in Texas. But until November 2022, the number of guests to receive its hospitality was limited to those who could safely use a runway only 3,600 feet long. Prior to November, our airport had the shortest runway among similar airports around the western Dallas-Fort Worth airspace. With the community's continuing economic growth largely fueled by tourism and supported by general aviation, the expansion of the airport was necessary to keep pace with demands. Major improvements were necessary, and it was going to require ingenuity, cooperation, and funding. Lengthening the existing runway was not an option. A longer runway was going to have to be a new runway. Taking the new runway project from concept to completion included hurdles such as land acquisition, transmission line relocation, an environmental assessment, updates of the airport layout plan, development of design packages, approach development, and three phases of construction, all required intricate and precise sequencing. City staff realized a project of this magnitude required a master plan update. As a proactive measure, the city used local funds for the update, ensuring that the master plan was in place when the new runway was completed. Key local elected leaders and community stakeholders were brought together by city leadership to explain the vision for the project and its positive impact on the region. Support gradually gained altitude, and over the years, it continued to climb. Still, the question of funding a project this size remained. The typical TexDOT aviation project is funded 90% federal and 10% local. A project of this magnitude required significantly more local funding. With a long-term commitment from the community, city leadership began aggressively pursuing construction of a new runway, knowing that ultimately, the city would be responsible for approximately half of the $32 million in total project costs. Monumental plans at the Granbury Regional Airport have now become tangible improvements: a new 5,200 by 75-foot runway, full-length parallel taxiway, new 8,000-square yard terminal apron, new LED runway edge lighting, new precision approach path indicators on both ends, new air-filled electrical vaults, and conversion of the former runway into a taxiway. It's with great pride that we honor Granbury Regional Airport as the most improved airport of the year.
So at this time, I would like to acknowledge a lot of people for this award. First off, I want... I've given this to Pat and Michael. They've been so instrumental in every detail of the projects that we've awarded for that construction. And like I told the TexDOT staff at this banquet we went to last week, I just simply hired good people and got out of their way. So it's really neat to see that. But more importantly, back in September of 2016, we presented to the council a plan to move forward this airport, and they voted yes unanimously. So with that in mind, and all the support that we've had, we got Pat here who's going to hand you all this plaque. And we want to thank you as the council for supporting us to be a success in this endeavor. Without the bond funds, without this ongoing support of budgeting, we would have never been able to get this accomplished. So thank you very much. I also like to say that we had some great folks with our engineering firm, KSA, and a gentleman named Joseph Garcia worked day and day and day to help save money on every step of this project as we went along. As we bid this project, we fully anticipated we were only going to have enough money to build the runway, not the taxiway, not the parallel taxiway. We were going to have to do that at a future time. But we had over 500,000 tons of rock to move. We had no idea what that was going to end up costing. And Mr. Garcia was able to negotiate and help us get that contractor to give us a firm price that was much lower than we thought. And we were able to build that runway in conjunction with the taxiway. And so now then, as we move forward, I just want the public to know we've got two dozen box hangars scheduled to be built, 15 acres to be developed for flat maintenance facilities for jet service. And we've got all kinds of things in the future economic development of the airport. What we anticipated taking five to 10 years to develop is going to happen in 30 months. And so we've got a great airport board that's supported us all the way. We appreciate you all. Thank you for all that you all have done to help us keep this on track. This started back in 2006 and '07. It didn't just happen overnight. And by the time that 2016 rolled around, it was time to either get with it or forget it. And fortunately, we were able to move forward successfully and get what we've done accomplished. Strong council making great decisions. Tony Mobley was part of that. So thank you all. You all have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you for being that 2016 leader for staff and taking it to city council and getting it done because that was pivotal. Yes, sir. And thank you, Pat, for being here.
We have another second presentation here tonight. This is National Lineman Appreciation Day, April 18th, 2023. National Lineman Appreciation Day is observed on April 18th every year. This day honors the hard work that women and men put in to keep the power on. These people work around the clock to provide electricity to family households and any other premises. Line workers have existed for as long as electricity has been a standard part of modern living. It is impossible to have power lines carrying electricity to our homes and businesses without them. They keep the lights on and the furnaces going. Line workers often do their jobs in the most dangerous of conditions and must face the worst weather conditions. However, bad weather is not the only danger in their career. The most dangerous task they must do every day is handling wires that pulse thousands of amps of current. These are the people in charge of restoring power, setting up emergency systems to carry us through, and putting life back in order when things get tough. In the U.S., there are over 115,000 line workers. Mr. Cogman?
Kenny, bring your crew down, and let's show them off a little bit. Thank you all. Thank you very much. We want to get a picture. Thank you. Thank you. Kenny, thank you, buddy.
I was at forward training today, presenting to some young adults, 17, 16, 17, 18 years of age. And at one point, they always ask, "Well, what do you like being mayor?" This is what I like, recognizing those people that make things happen. And they do a great job of making things happen. And stay in the background, it always amazes me. It's the... How do you call it? Well, it's just what we... Chris will say, "Well, that's just what we do." Well, you know, stand up and take a bow for all of the great things that you do because this city couldn't be prouder. So now let's move to public comments on agenda for non-public hearing items. I only have one... We don't have any public hearing items tonight. I only have one person that has asked to speak. So Mr. Lenny Shores, would you like to come up?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak again. I know I've been here a few times lately. I just wanted to make comments on part of your deliberation agenda for the increasing occupancy limitations from three bedrooms to seven bedrooms. As you know, I've been through planning and zoning. I've been to workshops. I've tried making inputs to ordinances. I've tried being rezoned. I've tried everything possible to have some changes that helps the Iron Horse Inn grow with the way things are changing now. As you know, we do have it up for sale. I would support the seven rooms or more, as you know, which is one item I've talked about several times. I know there would probably be questions on how many other people would then pop in with seven rooms and probably congestion and that type of things and what it would do to the neighborhood. Seven rooms, you know, I would expect parking limitations to remain the same. A normal residence with seven bedrooms, not to block anybody out, but it expands the business. The local area of Granbury is high on tourism. There's not enough rooms here for the current tourism. So, you know, I'm sure there's concerns about it, maybe even... And I'm going to talk specifically about the Iron Horse Inn. But every way I've tried, I've had to roadblock one way or the other. I've gone back and forth. And I'm asking the city council to help me out. I've talked to planning and zoning. I've talked to your city manager recently, and he told me his hands are tied unless can get city council to direct some change. The Iron Horse Inn, it's been running for 20, 30 years. I do have potential buyer. She wants to run it the exact same way. But she doesn't want to live on... Nobody wants to live in the residence. She has a local house here on the lake, Abe's Landing, five minutes away. But overall, it doesn't change. It's... If it's worried about being a party house... The Iron Horse itself is a little different. Every room is... It's not like a seven-bedroom house out on Airbnb where you just book every room. I'm on Airbnb. I've never captured a reservation from Airbnb. They're all separate rooms. They're all locked doors. Plan is to keep it running exactly the way it's running. But just looking for a little bit of help from being hosted versus unhosted. I guess I'm out of time. But I do appreciate it. Not sure what else I can say. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shores. Appreciate you coming up. No other comments? Okay. Move along to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine. Are previously discussed items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Council, you've had opportunity to look these over. Are there questions, comments, anything that you want to pull off of the consent agenda? I heard no one, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Burwell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Here are no nays, passes, six and oh. Five and oh. Okay. We'll move to the deliberation agenda. We'll be at 7.1. To discuss and consider short-term rental ordinance provisions as it relates to unhoused and short-term rental occupancy limitations from three bedrooms to seven bedrooms or more. Mr. Cogman?
Sure. As memo suggests, I provided a lot of information. But suggested action is if the council wishes to have this ordinance reviewed for these reasons, council will need to vote to send it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for them to post all the legal notices, research, review, and make any recommendations they may develop. However, if the 88th legislature passes the legislation that's currently posted out there that requires the city to change our ordinances, this process will occur naturally and at the same cost. If you vote to begin the process for this reason at this time, it might end up fast-tracking anticipated legislative change, or it might have been a waste of resources to post the legal notices anticipating change from the legislature. I understand right now that the legislature is speaking about STR bills and amendments as we speak tonight, so I just want you to be aware of that. However, if you deem it necessary to move forward in this regard to this particular request, anticipated time of delivery for the review and presentation back to the council would be probably 60 to 70 days. And I attached a schedule of the P and Z submittal dates and hearing dates and those kind of things. So this is in the zoning ordinance, and it would need to go through that legal process. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council, do you have questions, comments? Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Corrigan.
Just to clarify, if we voted to move forward, it would be on P and Z on May 8th or June 12th?
What's the submittal date on that chart? Let me go to that chart. That's it. That's the chart.
Yeah.
Okay. So submittal date is the far left column.
Okay, gotcha.
So we're past the April 5th submittal date.
So it'd be on June 12th?
So it would be June 7th. Or it would be, let's see here. It would come before the council, June 12th.
Okay. Thank you.
That would be the P and Z, I'm sorry, June 12th. And the July... Well, never mind.
So it wouldn't come back to council until... I'm reading across here.
Probably be the 5th of July. Because you all have to determine when you were to do that. When this calendar was made, you all established the date last meeting to be July 5th.
Right.
That would be the quickest that it could come back. If they take it and, you know, linger with it, it would be longer.
And if there's no special session, we'll know on May 29th. Or we'll know, could be, we'll know more before. We could know before May 29th, but certainly by May 29th, the status of the various, not just one, but the various legislation that is before the state right now that recommends that cities have nothing to do with STR, basically. I'm overstating that quite a bit. But the regulation, the legislation that is being proposed literally would strip the city of many of the ordinances that we currently have in place for short-term rentals. Am I misstating that?
Among other things.
Among other things, yeah. And we're going to know, like you say, we're going to know by May 29th whether or not that's... Those get passed or not.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Robb.
Chris, wasn't the city working on getting inputs from citizens on short-term rentals? Didn't we have a...
I'll ask Michael Ross to address that. I believe he was involved in the public meetings for STRs. Were you involved in that, or should I get Kara? Kara, our director of community development, maybe you could answer. We've been through this. As you all adopted the January ordinance, there were public meetings held, and people were solicited to attend. Do you want to talk about that? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Right. So we did have public meetings up here in the council chambers leading to the July meeting. And that'd be in January.
The changes you all adopted in January is what we're talking about?
July, sir.
Was it July of last year? Okay.
Right. So we did have a meeting with members of the public to solicit information and give them opportunity to let us know about their concerns leading to that July hearing. We had an open forum so that they could speak to the mic, and that's what we did.
Yeah, what were some of the main concerns that were brought up during those meetings?
Well, on the desire to control short-term rentals, there were concerns expressed common to parking on the street, noise, considerations for number of guests at a given time, ranging to property maintenance, that kind of thing. I think those things that we typically hear. And from the input for the operators' desire to not be overburdened, I think that summarizes it at a high level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corrigan.
Just another point of clarification. We have a council meeting on June 6th, and the following filing deadline is June 7th. Is that feasible? Like if we postponed it to that June 6th meeting, could it be on the filing for June 7th? Kara, you could submit... I'm sorry.
Give me a minute.
Yes, please.
So you could submit it on June 7th, and then it would percolate through to August 1st.
Okay. I'm just thinking, if we're potentially going to have an answer on whether this whole thing matters one way or the other at the end of May anyways, and we're already past the April 5th deadline for submittal, we're only skipping one, and I understand it's time one way or the other, but we're skipping one filing deadline to then potentially do something on the following filing deadline at the 7th after the meeting on the 6th?
Let me just walk it through in my own mind. We are asking to change the ordinance from three days... Or three bedrooms to seven bedrooms, not changing anything else. Everything else, the parking spaces, everything stays the same. Three bedrooms to seven bedrooms. The legislation that is out there would... Well, doesn't... It would. It says cities have no say in STRs. You can't limit this. You can't add this. You can't put this... It's a... I mean, it's a litany of you can'ts. And that legislation, we will know for sure by May 29th that it's either been approved or not, or it's passed or not passed. And maybe we'll know in the morning, for that matter. So the question is, do we send it back to P and Z, expend the money associated with posting legal notices, et cetera, which we're required to do by the state? Sort of an unmandated... It's a mandated expense that we don't get reimbursed for, but we have to do. Or do we just wait? Mr. Corrigan? I see your lights on.
Yeah, no, that was my point. I think it would be prudent to wait and then postpone this topic until the June 6th council meeting.
Comments?
Would it, would it be better to table it, or just, would it lie, or how, administratively, how would that work best, Chris?
In a nutshell, we'll know by May twenty-ninth what's gonna happen. If we don't, there's no waiting until then, isn't gonna change what we do or not. If we just go ahead and vote on this tonight, whether to send it back to P and Z and then bring it back to us, the timeframe isn't gonna matter that much, but I don't think postponing it is really gonna do us any good. I think that if we vote on it tonight, whatever we decide to do, we could take this up regardless of whether we vote on it tonight, because I'm sure it will come up again, regardless of the legislation. So my suggestion would be just to vote on it tonight.
Is it, is it something that we vote on?
Yes. We would need a motion.
I do have a, something that I like to talk about. Are you done, Ms. Rurrell? Okay. So, Chris, do we have any data relating to STRs within the city limits that pertain to our ordinance? Bed and breakfasts, do we have any of those, that data?
Yes.
Okay, so, do we have data that can be generated for, for all the council members to look at all the short-term rentals? How many bedrooms? How many parking spots? Who owns them? As far as unhosted, hosted, when it comes to bed and breakfasts as well?
The monthly financial report that I provide you has all the B and Bs listed.
Okay.
Now then, how those broke down, we might could do some more research and put that together for you. But those are listed in there, and some are hosted, some are unhosted. We don't have many hosted anymore, but there's a few out there.
Okay. I just want, I want all of us to have that information so we can
Sure.
just make a more educated decision on what, how we're gonna vote.
Also, in the future, y'all are aware that we're working on the zoning ordinance. We've got Mr. Farmer working as a consultant to help us fine-tune our zoning ordinance, and this item will end up being presented at a future date through that review as well. And so there's gonna be plenty of talk about short-term rentals in the next few months, just so you know.
So do I hear a motion to? It could be to change the short-term rental ordinance provision as it relates to unhosted short-term rental occupancy limitations from three bedrooms to seven bedrooms or more?
Mayor, I think we're voting to send it back to P and Z. I don't think we're voting on that actual item. Is that, am I correct?
Well, if we voted it, it's, you're right.
We have to vote to send it back to P and Z.
You're right, we have to vote to send it back. So, do you have that verbiage, you could make that motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion. I actually will make a motion to not send the item back to P and Z at this time.
To not send it back. Or earlier. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Rurrell makes motion to not send it back to P and Z. It's seconded by Mr. Vale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay. Can, Ms. Rurrell, can we just add on to your, that we still need that research?
We've talked about that. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, we've talked about that multiple times. I think that Michael is actually already working on that with Kira, getting that information that we talked about the last time we were here. So, I don't really, don't think I want to amend my motion.
Let me, let's finish up the ayes and nays, and I will say nay, passes three and two, we will not send it back to Planning and Zoning. Now, Mr. Rodriguez, do you have a request for staff?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to direct the staff to do the research I just stated before. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Is it all copacetic? Everybody good? Okay, thank you. Okay, seven point two. Consider approving award, a bid to Lever Construction LLC for the City Hall renovation project in the amount of five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, authorize the city manager to execute contracts. Number two, consider approving an expenditure of up to eighty thousand dollars with selected vendor for new security cameras for the City Hall project, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract for work. Number three, consider approving an expenditure of up to ninety thousand dollars with selected vendor for a new security access control system for City Hall project, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract for work. And number four is consider adopting ordinance number twenty-three dash thirty-three, amending the operating budget for the general fund to provide funding for City Hall renovation project and other miscellaneous security-related improvements listed herein. Mr. Kaufman?
As you know, we've been working towards a soft remodel of this building for quite some time, and went through the, been through the laborious process of programming the building with an architect, and we finally have got to a point where we're getting everything but floor covering, I think, at this point, and so we're still holding out on the floor covering part of it, as described in your memo. I'll turn it over to Michael Ross, our deputy city manager, to go over the process and what, what this item is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, City Council. As Chris said, the city's architect, PGA L, has completed the, completed the design package for the City Hall renovation project, and these projects were advertised for construction bids for the month of March. On March thirtieth, we opened those bids and received one, a single bid from Lever Construction LLC in the amount of five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. The city has reviewed the proposal, the bid from Lever Construction, and determined that they have the project performance history and the ability to complete the projects. It was determined, also as Chris said, that the most cost-effective way to handle the flooring was to break that out and do that ourselves with, with a, through a flooring store. And the flooring replacement component of the project would be bid out later as the renovation project is nearing completion from a timing perspective. We also have some, a few furniture fixtures and equipment, the FFNE, that we'll need to look at, so that may, that'll be one more item, items that will come back to council once we have those numbers for your consideration. The, as council recalls, in the current city, your, your current strategic plan, the council established a goal to review and identify opportunities to streamline development, permitting, and inspection, information, and processes, the one-stop shop that we, we keep referring to. This City Hall renovation project is a key part of the implementation progress towards accomplishing that goal, and by uniting the development process team all in one facility. We do recommend that council approve award of the bid to Lever Construction LLC for the City Hall renovation project in the amount of five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute contracts. We also ask that you approve an expenditure of up to eighty thousand dollars with selected vendor for the new security cameras for City Hall project, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract for that work, and to approve an expenditure for up to ninety thousand with selected vendor for the new security access control system, similar to what we installed at the police department, identical to that, I'm sorry. And authorize the city manager to execute the contract for that work, and then to approve a budget amendment to provide funding for City Hall renovation project and other miscellaneous security-related improvements listed herein. And then, so there's those four items, if you concur with all four of those, unless Jeremy objects, I would think that you could make a motion to approve the recommended items all in this single agenda item, or do it separately if, if legal recommends that. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have questions? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, so, I'm looking at the financial impact, Michael, so, it's five oh nine, seven forty-two, and then on top of that's the eighty thousand, and then the ninety thousand, and then the thirty-five thousand, and then the twenty thousand, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Those, those lower than fifty thousand dollar items are in the budget amendment as well. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, other than the ones that you listed here, what else are we looking at? Because it's not all-inclusive, there's, you said some other stuff that needs to be added in the future.
Rather than include the, all the flooring, replacement of all the carpet and, and that, and also the furniture and fixtures and equipment, the carpet will be the line share of what we bring back. We have a resident expert on staff from flooring, and it was easily determined that we could save money. Chris saw that right away versus funneling all of that through a general contractor and then their sub, and then the carpet, the provider, that store, so it was much better to go directly to, to the stores, which is what staff is doing, and then we'll bring that back after competitively bidding it, because the number is gonna be higher than fifty thousand, so it will require competitive bidding. And then furniture and fixtures is, is just, and as well as those other two items, each of those being under fifty thousand, they're just included in the budget amendment as items we'd like for you all to agree to, but they're, since they're under fifty thousand, unlike eighty and the ninety thousand dollar items, which are over fifty, we're asking for you to authorize the city manager to go ahead and get those done, so we don't have to come back again after we competitively bid those. We know what those numbers are gonna look like already, we already have good pricing from, in our IT department.
I just, I guess, that five hundred and nine, that's a, that's a half a million dollars on, I guess I don't know the scope of work, and that's why I am hesitating on this, and is it, is it just that downstairs area that we're just gonna be renovating, or is it something else within this, this city hall that we're looking at?
It is all the downstairs area, downstairs area. The big part of the number is ballistic glass around all of the customer service counters, protecting those like at the police department now you would see, or in any new facility you would see that going in, and other security measures like that in City Hall, some upstairs, that we wouldn't want to talk about specifically.
Okay.
But those, that's a, that is a large part of the number, and the times that we live in is another reason for the large number, and we, we weren't thrilled with it either. We just know we have to get this done, we know we need to finish this renovation to deliver that council goal of getting everybody in the building, improving our, our ability to respond to development in a better way.
So is it gonna be a complete gut job? Do you know, or is all is gonna be moved?
There are a few walls, there's, it's not a complete gut job by any means. It's, it's a few walls, again, but the biggest part of that is gonna be all of those customer service counters being completely redone to provide that protective screen for the staff there. Municipal court, utility billing, and permitting.
A lot of paint, a lot of paint.
A lot of paint.
First floor totally getting repainted, there's changing of the organization of the workflow, based on having everybody work together as a team, we're having to reorganize the workflow and, and strategize that. There's, again, ballistic resistant wall material gonna be put in, and there's, it's to make it more of a safe envelope for our team, and also to re-carpet the entire facility, and that's not included in this. I would, I would estimate that carpet's probably gonna be somewhere between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and we've, we've been putting that off for six or seven years. As long as I've been here, we've been talking about replacing carpets. So it is a twenty, twenty-one-year-old building now, and it hadn't had a lot of maintenance on it other than exterior paint, so it's probably time. There's some fire sprinkler systems that have to be tweaked on the first floor that relates to some costs because of the walls being relocated, and some additional walls being installed, some, some air ducts have to be addressed. Obviously, the, the, there's a couple of new offices that are gonna need a little bit of furniture, we're not bidding that yet, but we'll be able to buy that on the DIR pricing through the state bid, and so, like we did for the police department, we'll be buying some equipment through local vendor, we think, but we've still gotta work on that. So, everything's been brought to you that we need tonight, except for the floor covering and the furniture fixture and equipment. Chris Collins is standing back there, if you need to talk technical on any of the security cameras or anything like that, he can help you with that as well. But we're trying to, I think the security system in this building was installed in about two thousand and five or six, and it's never been updated, it's end of life. We can't update the, the software. In fact, don't tell anybody, but the cameras don't work that are on the building now, so no way, no way to read them.
And another inflationary part of this is the fact that they're having to work with existing offices, people in offices.
Yeah, we're doing it in phases.
Yeah, that, that'll, that's another, adds to the time and therefore the cost, because you have to move, you do an office and then you move the staff over there, and then you move them back. Fortunately, we have the vacant area that used to be the police department, but that is, that's a part of this too, just making it work to try to, trying to deliver.
Yeah, the, the other, the other thing that gets me, Michael, is that you had only one bid, and sometimes we're just, we're just subject to that one bid, so we don't have no comparison to, to look at, and if there was two or three other comparisons, or even five comparisons, and they all came out to be somewhere in that area, then you know it's a, it's a very competitive bid process that we can look at, but right now you only have one person submitting their, their number, and they could inflate that number without us knowing what the true value of the cost of construction would be. That's only my concern.
Ours too. Yes, sir. And, you know, the, we talked to the contractor, and, and one of the factors is school's almost out, and all of these kind of contractors are just waiting for these school projects that begin the day after school's out, and they have to be finished before school starts.
And is there a contingency in this, in this amount as well?
Not for the, the bid, the five oh nine number, no, sir. The others have built-in contingent, a little built-in contingency on the, the items after that, that IT has been pricing, just once, until we bid them. We know the, these are the not-to-exceed numbers after the contractor ones, the ninety and the eighty, but the hard bid, hard proposal one is the, is the one from Lever Construction, and that's, that, that is what it is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Burwell?
Talking about these numbers. I count on the council to look at this closely, and obviously they have. I'm, you know, adding all of this up here back in the back, and it's, you know, nine hundred thousand plus, but I'm also considering that we get to the one shop, or the one-stop shop, as I know that you guys want more than probably even the developers out there want. We'll turn back a million dollars in expedited permits, et cetera, et cetera, expedited building within a couple of years. So, I know it's hard to do it, but I would anticipate that there's gonna be, you know, a return on this that looks pretty good.
Yes, sir.
And I too, I'm, I'm with you about the one bid. I had that conversation with Chris and, and Michael, I've gone through the financials of each of the people that are bidding. They're, you know, it's one bid. That's just something, and I, I really, and it's a bid out of Fort Worth, Weatherford, not Granbury, which I really would, would have preferred, but we got, we went through the process, and we got, we have here.
We broadcasted far and wide. I mean, every, every contractor in Granbury that does this kind of work, we sent them an email invitation and said, please bid this, you know, this is in your wheelhouse, and we had several show up for, for a pre-bid meeting that expressed interest, but when it came time to submit bids, we had one that showed up five minutes before bid opening deadline to turn theirs in, which is not unusual.
Also, the architect vetted the pricing, and it, you know, is deemed to be within reason, and he does- reason. And he does these projects everywhere, so ballistic, ballistic resistant walls are a normal thing in his world, and he knows how much a square foot they ought to cost. And so, um, he looked, he looked, reviewed the bid. And, you know, he explained it's a small job to the real people out there. It really is a small job in perspective for people that do this soft remodels for a living.
Right.
Anything else for, uh, staff? No? Do I hear a motion to approve the award of the bid to Lever Construction LLC for the City Hall renovation project in the amount of $509,742, and authorize the city manager to execute contracts? Consider approving an expenditure of up to $80,000 with selected vendor for new security cameras for City Hall project, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract for work. Consider approving an expenditure of up to $90,000 with selected vendor for new security access control system for City Hall project, and authorize the city manager to execute contract for work. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-33, amending the operating budget for the general fund to provide funding for the City Hall renovation project and other miscellaneous security-related improvements listed herein. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Burwell makes the motion?
I'm second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. 5-0. Mr. Wadley's on my mind here. Okay. That, uh, finishes the, uh, agenda work that we have. I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session. That all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we are now in closed session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present with the exception of Dr. Wadley. Any, uh, yes, Ms. Burwell?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Jamie Cornwell and the Related Trust for the development of a property located on 377.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Vale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. The motion passes 6-0. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Burwell?
Yes, sir.
No? Corgan? Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Vale? No one? Okay. With there being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned.